Good evening and welcome to the April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, meeting of the Town of Barnstable Planning Board. My name is Steve Robichaud. Meeting today is being held at Barnstable Town Hall, three sixty-seven Main Street, Hyannis, Mass., in the James H. Crocker Hearing Room, seven P. M. And this meeting was noticed previously with the town clerk. I'll start by calling to order our meeting and introduce our board members and staff, starting with Mary.
Good evening, Mary Barry.
And Ray.
Good evening, Ray Sexton.
And Bob.
Good evening, Bob Twish.
And Tim.
Good evening, Tim O'Neil.
And Michael.
Good evening, Michael Messinas.
And Jim.
Good evening, Jim Cupfer, Senior Planner, Planning and Development.
And Karen.
Good evening, Karen Herrend, Administrative Assistant, Planning and Development.
Thank you, and again, my name is Steve Robichaud. Notice of recording, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on Channel eighteen in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty. I will now inquire whether anyone else is taping, and if you are, please make your presence known. Seeing none, we will continue. Application materials may be accessed by contacting Karen Herrend at Karen dot Herrend at Town dot Barnstable dot M A dot U S, or calling five zero eight eight six two four zero six four. The first portion of our meeting this evening is general public comment. This is public comment not related to any of tonight's agenda items. If there's anybody here this evening for general public comment, please make your way forward, state your name, and state your comments. Seeing none, we will continue to our first item this evening, which is an approval-not-required plan.
Mister Chairman, we have an approval-not-required plans. The Town of Barnstable has submitted an approval-not-required plan entitled "Approval Not Required Plan of Land at One Forty Old Oyster Road in Barnstable, Katuat, Massachusetts, Barnstable County, prepared for the Town of Barnstable, Department of Public Works, prepared by J.C. Engineering Incorporated, dated October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two."
Thank you, Ray, and this is not a public hearing, and therefore does not need a vote to open, close the hearing. We have the plans up on the screen, and sir, if you could state your name and please present the information.
Certainly. Good evening. My name is David Anthony. I'm the Director of Asset Management. I work out of the Town Manager's Office. The plan you have before you is the former Katuat Elementary School. It consists of about thirteen and a half acres. When the school was closed in two thousand and nine as part of a massive redistricting of the schools, there were four elementary schools that were closed. This one was leased by the school department for ten years until two thousand and nineteen to the Waldorf School, at which time a milestone in the lease allowed the school to discontinue that lease. They declared it surplus, turned it back over to the Town of Barnstable. At that time, there was a subcommittee of the Town Council called the Asset Management Advisory Committee that had taken up this particular property so as to not let it go to waste, to not let the building sit neglected for too long. Very early on during some public meetings, by Zoom during COVID, we had quite a good turnout from the Village of Katuat over several meetings, and there were a number of ideas that were talked about as to what to do with this parcel, always thinking that this is the last and only space for open recreation in the Village of Katuat. But the liability of the school and what was going to happen at that school was very important to the Katuat Fire District specifically, as there is a well that is eight hundred feet downstream, eight hundred yards, excuse me, eight hundred yards just off property to the south or to the bottom of that map. So they began to work with the town to try to find a way to acquire the rights initially to determine what was going to happen on that land, and eventually we struck upon the idea that the town would retain approximately five acres of recreation land with access off of Main Street in Katuat, and that the Katuat Fire District would acquire approximately eight acres, including the liability of the school, at no cost. This was a savings to the taxpayers of the town by not having to demolish a school to the tune of about a million dollars. It also granted them the opportunity to control what's going to happen upstream to their well. The very reality is that with new technology and emerging contaminants, there is the possibility that this well could eventually have something found in it that would require a water treatment facility, and this is one of the last spaces in proximity to a well that the Katuat Fire District would have if, in fact, they needed a place to treat water in Katuat. So over the course of two years, we've met with a subcommittee of the Katuat Fire District to try to work out the details of this exchange, recognizing that there's a real connection between the two. We wanted to make sure that we maintained the recreational facilities, so we came up with a conservation restriction that was going to sit on the five acres once the approval-not-required was moved through, so that they would have something to say about the activities that happened on all of the thirteen acres to make sure that nothing messed with the well specifically. They will assume the liability of the school and of the eight acres once this approval-not-required would be approved. So we are before you tonight to ask for that important step to divide the thirteen acres into two parcels so that we can proceed with filing the conservation restriction and then also moving to Town Council for disposal of the remaining eight acres.
Great. Thank you very much for that, and appreciate staff's detailed staff report. Jim, do you have any comments to make on the staff report?
I'll just add that both, excuse me, access to both Lot A and Parcel B are adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicle traffic, so as adequate access, and I would recommend endorsement of the plan.
Thank you, Jim. Now work through the board for comments, questions, concerns, starting with Mary.
All set. Thank you.
And Ray.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Just a quick question. I know this is an ongoing issue as far as the disposal of the property and then going forward. Please, I'm a relative newcomer, and so I'm still kind of catching up on some of the history, which I appreciate. Has the property actually been transferred to the village or to the Fire District, or is that still pending?
So that would be still pending, as the town will retain one of the pieces after the approval-not-required division, and then we would transfer the balance to the Katuat Fire District. So until we are able to divide the parcel into two pieces, then we can effect the transfer of the appropriate eight acres.
And that, what we're talking about right now is approximately five acres, correct?
The town would retain the five acres that essentially are the ball field, the tennis courts, and the entryway and driveway from Main Street.
And then the additional eight acres, which includes the school, is to be determined when and where and how it's transferred, correct?
Well, ideally, we would move that through Town Council rather quickly, as the hope is that by the annual meeting of the Katuat Fire District, the very last day of May, that they would be in a position to be able to accept that eight acres if we can move it through Town Council and Conservation Commission, which is another step.
And at that time, then, the Fire District would then take on responsibility for maintenance and whatever happens to the building.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ray. And Bob?
I'm good. Thanks.
And Tim?
I'm all set. Thank you.
And Michael?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And I'm all set as well. Appreciate the detailed presentation. At this time, we would seek a motion on this item.
Mister Chairman, I move to endorse the plan entitled "Approval Not Required Plan of Land at One Forty Old Oyster Road in Barnstable, Katuat, Massachusetts, Barnstable County, prepared for the Town of Barnstable, Department of Public Works, prepared by J.C. Engineering Incorporated, dated fourteen October, two thousand and twenty-two, as an approval-not-required plan.
Thank you, Ray, and do we have a second on this motion?
Second.
Thank you, Michael. All those in favor. Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is a special permit.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Bay Ridge Realty LLC has submitted a special permit application for seventy-eight North Street, Hyannis, for eleven accessory parking spaces in connection with the redevelopment of seventy-eight North Street to provide for eleven residential units of housing, where thirty spaces have historically been utilized on the municipal lot across the street. This is a new public hearing, and if it's convenient, Mister Chair, I move to open the public hearing.
Excellent. Recognize that motion, and look for a second on that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mary, and all those in favor. Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Hearing is open. And now I have a presentation by the applicant.
Good evening, Mister Chair. Members of the board. For the record, Michael Schultz, on behalf of the applicant, Bay Ridge Realty LLC. With me this evening, I have Architect Kurt Raiber and Engineer Matthew Eddy. The application for you this evening is a special permit that the applicant is seeking for accessory parking in connection with the redevelopment of the property located at seventy-eight North Street in Hyannis. According to Town Assessing records, the property was developed in nineteen seventy-two with an eleven thousand six hundred and square, six hundred and four square-foot building containing professional offices on approximately point one-six acres of land. As you'll see in the plans that Matt Eddy will review with you momentarily, the structure of the property takes up almost the entire lot, rendering no space for onsite parking. Since its development in nineteen seventy-two, the property has utilized the municipal parking lot located directly across the street. In fact, Mister Eddy did own the property himself for sixteen years, from two thousand and five until two thousand and twenty-one, at which time the town had approval for up to thirty parking spaces for the professional offices that were utilized at the premises. Under the proposed redevelopment, the applicant is seeking to modify the existing structure to create eleven units of residential housing, which use would require eleven parking spaces, a reduction of nineteen parking spaces from what was historically allowed at the municipal lot across the street. The modification of the structure would allow for a number of benefits, including but not limited to greater conformance with the ordinance from what presently exists. Under the new zoning, office professional use requires or would require for that size building thirty-three spaces. This use would require eleven. Second, it would be consistent with the design and the infrastructure plan in that it would create housing opportunities for residents of all income levels. It's located also within a walkable distance to the transportation hub and to downtown Main Street in Hyannis. It would minimize curb cuts on North Street through use of shared parking. And finally, the municipal lot where the proposed spaces would be located, it's directly across the street. It's in a non-residential district, and it's within three hundred feet of the property itself. Prior to coming before you this evening, we were before site plan review in October, which we did receive approval. It was conditioned upon reaching a parking agreement with the town. Under the new zoning, in effect, in the area, site plan review is not required, but again, we did go through that process and vetted all of the comments at that time. The applicant would respectfully request a special permit from this planning board this evening, which special permit would be conditioned upon reaching a parking agreement with the town. We've been inactive negotiating or just talking to the town about, you know, what that would be, and will continue to do so. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Matt and to Kurt to walk you through the plans, to show you the project, and afterwards would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
There we go. Good evening. For the record, Matthew Eddy, Professional Engineer with Baxton Eye Engineering and Surveying, and I would just like to briefly walk you through the existing conditions plan and then the proposed site plan. Mike has hit on a lot of the highlights. It's a fairly straightforward project, I believe. Again, address seventy-eight North Street, which was where my offices were there for almost fifteen years, so I'm very familiar with the site. As Mike mentioned, the site's about point one-six acres, built in nineteen seventy-two. The building, you know, entirely takes up the entire lot, basically, and the parking has always been across the street. We actually were allowed up to thirty parking permits, which they, the town instituted the parking permits in that lot probably about five years or so ago, and so we were then allocated permits that allowed us, because right now, the way the parking lot works is you can park six hours, and then after that, you get a ticket unless you have a permit. So we had the permits for our employees and et cetera for using the parking lot across the street for the building. So the lot has about sixty feet of frontage on North Street. It's surrounded by commercial and mixed commercial and residential space. The public parking lot that we're talking about is to the south across North Street, to the south of the building. There are obviously no environmental features on this lot. There's basically no wooded areas. It's pretty much impervious area and some lawn areas. The new zoning district with the new zoning amendment is downtown village. The existing building footprint is about four thousand thirty square feet. In the site, existing impervious coverage is about seventy-three percent. Zoning allows, the current zoning allows eighty percent impervious coverage. As Mike stated, there obviously is no parking or access on the lot itself, and as we've discussed, you know, historically, the parking's been across the street. As far as utilities, the building is currently connected to public sewer and public water. It has overhead electric, and natural gas does exist in the road frontage, although the building isn't connected to natural gas at this point in time. So for the proposal, it's actually going to be, again, being very familiar with it, I think it's going to be a great improvement to the building and for the area, really, an infill of what, you know, the town needs with the residential, as you all know, and, I mean, I know most of the projects I'm working on now are, you know, a lot of residential projects, infill, et cetera, and I really think this is going to be a nice addition to that, and which, you know, Kurt will walk through the architecture on it. I think it's really going to dress up the front of the building. So there's eleven units proposed. If you're familiar with the front, this is what you're seeing up here right now. This is the landscape plan, but on the, in the front of the building, right now, there's an area well here and area well here, which basically, it's kind, the building's kind of a split level building, and so you walk in those area ways from outside, and you can walk down in those area ways, and that gets you to the lower level, and then your main existing entrance is here, and you walk in there, and then you walk up a half story to get to what we're calling the first level, but it's like a half a story up. So with the proposal, those area ways are going to come out. Those are going to be filled in. It's going to create new landscape areas, landscape beds along the frontage. There's a current portico over the entrance right now. That's actually going to get expanded just slightly and enclosed for a vestibule coming in, so now when you're coming into the building, you come through a door, you're in an enclosed vestibule, and then you're into the building, so it just helps with heating and cooling of the building. The front walkway area is actually going to be pulled out and reconstructed, a little bit narrower than what it is, new materials, but it's still going to be eight feet wide, which is a nice walkway entrance. There's a large concrete pad that's here that has an old flagpole on it. That's coming out. So again, all of those impervious areas are coming out. They're all going to become green space, new landscape areas, and it actually decreases the impervious coverage on the lot to about seventy percent. Again, it's a small lot, so it's a small reduction in actual square footage of impervious, but it is a reduction, so. As Mike mentioned, with eleven units under the new zoning, it's eleven parking spaces required, one parking space per unit. As I had mentioned, historically, as the office building, previously, it was actually allowed up to thirty parking permits, so it's going to be, you know, it's less than half the amount of parking that'll be utilized in that parking lot across the street for the proposed use. We've created and enhanced the pedestrian circulation. Again, just, you know, dressing up the front entrance, but then we've also provided a pedestrian access around the side of the building, and in the rear is a, where the refuse area is going to be. It's all fenced and screened. It's just, it's a tote, so you'll have one, you know, the little trash tote on wheels for, one for each unit. That's actually how we did the trash when, when the, it was an office building when I was there, and then so that allows people to, you know, get back in here, and then the totes are brought out, and the trash pickup has always been along North Street, so the totes can be brought back out here and then put back in behind the fenced enclosure, so they're screened from view from everybody. As far as utilities, it's actually going to get a new fire service. The building's currently not sprinkled, so it will be sprinkled with the residential use. It'll be a new fire service connection for that. We've also proposed, there's a new street light that's going in right adjacent to the sidewalk that leaves the building, and then it'll be adjacent to the sidewalk along North Street here, and that light is going to be a nice, kind of the antique-style light that you see along North Street and Main Street. The town requested that during site plan review, so we're going to be providing, or the town has provided those specs for that light to match that style, so. Again, I really think it's going to be a nice dress-up for the, for the look of this building. As far as drainage, there's some limited drainage on site, but we have actually added some additional dry well on there to pick up the entire roof area, infiltrate on site. The lot's very level, very sandy soil. In all of my years there, I never saw any issue with any runoff or drainage, but again, we've enhanced the drainage somewhat just to pick up the entire roof area, so. And then landscaping, as I kind of mentioned, you know, we're infilling those area ways, removing some of the hardscape, but then, so, and providing foundation plantings, et cetera, and then providing two nice street trees along the North Street road frontage. Again, the frontage is only sixty feet wide, so it's really, it's going to, I think it's really going to look nice. I think it'll be a good addition and a good project for the town and kind of a good kickoff. I think this is the first hearing before you under the new zoning. Is that correct? So, yeah, so it's, it's an exciting, exciting move here for the town with this new zoning. I really think it is. So with that, I am going to pass it over to Kurt, and Kurt can walk through the architecture in the building. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Kurt Raiber, and I'm a principal at Catalyst Architecture and Interiors in Yarmouthport. We're very pleased to be here working on this project. I'm, again, familiar with the project of the building for many years, because I would visit Matt in his office there, but it's a great reuse of a, of a office building and converting it into housing right in downtown. I think it responds to exactly what the town and this board was looking for with the new form-based code. I believe our plans, our architectural plans were submitted in hard copy. I don't think that they're on this PC, but I brought them with me if we want to put them up on the screen. Is that?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay. So if you're familiar with the, the building right now, as you view it from across the street or on, you know, as you pass by on North Street, quite a different view with brick and dark bronze plate glass windows, very commercial look from the late sixties, early seventies. Oh, thanks. And so, as Matt mentioned, the only new footprint is the enclosed vestibule and gable end of the portico to cover the entrance. Inside the entrance would be mailboxes for the eleven units. Again, it's just a very narrow site, fencing on both sides. We included in our package just the existing layout of the building, so this is the lower level, and as Matt mentioned, on the right side of the drawing are the two area ways, which were kind of second ways, yeah, into the basement, and there's large plate glass windows again into that lower level, which is set about four foot below grade. So again, it's a split level, so you're going to go in the building, go down, go up right away. So that stair in the, in the front is, takes you up and down upon entrance. The first floor and the second floor. Again, there's the current front view, and we'll be taking out the majority of that plate glass window, and as you can see in the lower drawing, this is the west elevation, faces the neighbor's parking lot next door. Again, painted CMU block elevation with kind of typical fixed windows and hopper style windows with through-wall AC units. Similar on the other side on the east, and the top of the page is the rear of the building with no fenestration and a steel fire escape. Our proposed plan includes three residential units on the grade level, or first lower level, we're calling it, with a total of four bedrooms. The first floor, again, just a half story above grade, is four units with six bedrooms, meaning there's two, two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units, and the same layout with a slightly different corridor on the second level. So for a total of eleven units and sixteen bedrooms. We'll be rebuilding the fire escape on the rear of the building, which is the left side, and then here's our proposed elevations. So responding, in fact, we designed sort of while the form-based code was being developed and, and processed kind of through its path in town, but we did go back and look at, and the only thing that might be different would be if the building could be picked up and moved forward, so that the front yard were, but everything else is compliant with the.
That sounds easy.
Yeah.
Right?
But it's not, and, but I, shortly after the, we kind of understood what the form-based code was looking for, we did go back and even calculate the fenestration. So we do have eighteen, a little better than eighteen percent fenestration, and fifteen percent is required in the new bylaw. Again, that lower level, that lower plant, elevation at the bottom of the page is the street-side elevation, and you can see up at the top, we're proposing a screen, because this building will have eleven dedicated HVAC systems, one for each unit, and it'll be all electric for heating and cooling. It'll be heat pump technology, and the outdoor compressor units will be rooftop, so they won't be in the alley or in the side yards or, and nothing in the front yard. On the side elevations, we'll be replacing all of the windows with full-size operable double-hung windows, and again, where the through-wall units, ventilation and heating units came through the sidewall, be replaced with a solid panel, and we'll be repainting again all of the block, but the front side of the building and a return of around five feet on each side will be brand-new, clambered. We'll be rebuilding the fire escape with a roof structure to protect it from ice and snow. So that's the east side and the rear side, be in the north side. Pretty much, that's it.
Yeah, great presentation, and very much appreciated. Anything to add before we start? Comments or comments?
Nothing on my end. Thank you very much.
Okay. A very detailed presentation. Appreciate the three of you and your time. This is very satisfying to see. This is very satisfying to see, having, you know, been a part of the form-based code process from the beginning. This is what we hoped for, and hopefully this will be the first of many. You know, the building looks great. I just wanted to mention a few things just to the board, you know, for us, our charge is simply a special permit here tonight to give relief from eleven parking spaces down to zero. You'll notice on the staff report, one of the conditions does mention an agreement, a parking agreement prior to occupancy. Jim, is that accurate?
Yes, that's one of the recommended conditions, is prior to, you know, occupancy and use of the residential use, some form of, you know, agreement or license or permit could be conditioned.
Great, so I think that's a useful condition. And, you know, I also wanted to add that, you know, this is a property that will have one deed restricted, affordable. Is that correct? Great, beautiful, so. Great spot for housing and great to see, in my opinion. So at this time, I believe we have an open public hearing, so why don't we see if there's any members of the public seek to speak on this this evening? Seeing none, I believe we can go to the board for questions, comments, concerns. Mary?
Thank you. Just a quick question, do we, do you have an agreement now with the town for the thirty spaces? Is that how that works now?
Yeah, it's, I mean, as the office space, it wasn't, is not a formal agreement. The way that they, you know, kind of instituted the parking permits when they initiated that, again, it was only five or six years ago. We had to approach them and say, okay, hey, I got an office building here. When this was built, it was always used that parking lot, and so we need to have parking permits. So they provided parking permits to like, you know, my, my building, and there's a few other buildings as well that, you know, you just, you would hang on your rearview mirror.
Right.
And it would allow your car to be there longer than six hours without getting a ticket. And that's all it was, and it was based on, and that, you know, I had met with Brian Florence on it previously when this kind of just all got initiated, and we talked about with the building being usable office space of like, you know, nine to ten thousand square feet, that's where the thirty parking spaces were coming from that were allowed.
And I believe it's the change of use that's triggering the need for this special permit? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so this special permit would be, would be including the, Jim, which you had said, the, the specific parking of eleven spaces as part of the permit?
Right, and with an, with an agreement established specifically for that with the town. Because obviously with residential use, there'll be parking overnight.
Right.
So that's really.
And then just my, is this an apartment?
Yeah.
Complex that's going to be? Okay. Rental, right, okay. I think that's it, thank you.
Great, yeah, so essentially we would be granting relief to zero spaces under the condition that prior to people moving in, there'd be an agreement for parking in place. Ray, your thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question, is it prudent to incorporate the staff's draft conditions into the motion to approve or deny, as the case may be?
That's a great question, and just as a matter of procedure, when and if a motion is made, that motion will read the findings and reference the conditions by stating "as referenced in the staff report." And when that's made, it will be one single motion.
I'm glad Bob has this one. So.
They're in good hands.
Just volunteer.
Uh, Jim, you're, you're the test pilots, you're the, you're the first in the door for this. I salute you, I'm excited that we'll see how this works. And I know that Jim is going to keep a keen eye on how things go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well said, Ray, thank you, and Bob?
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, Bob, Tim?
No, I don't have any questions, I just have one for Jim quickly. That municipal lot across the street, is it owned by the town of Barnstable?
So the, the North Street parking lot has mixed ownership, but there is a large percentage that is owned by the, the town of Barnstable.
Oh, interesting, okay. So the town could enter into it an agreement to do this, in theory?
Yes, and speaking with the parking director, there are several other entities that have parking permits at that location and a few other municipal lots in the area.
Okay. That was it, I think this is a great project and a, a great redevelopment that is strongly needed for the area, and I'm excited to see this come to fruition out of the form-based code. I think it's a great thing.
Well said, Tim, thank you. Michael?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just want to say thank you so much for putting this together. Looking forward to see the whole building renewed, so I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Michael, and I'm all set as well. So with that, I believe we can move to close the public hearing. Do I have a motion at that effect?
Move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Bob, in a second. Uh, sorry, Jim, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, if, if the board does choose to move forward with this permit, there's one suggested condition that is omitted that I would like to offer for consideration, and that is for the inclusionary housing unit that's, that has been discussed. If, if the board agrees to condition the local initiative program application, so the local action unit, the, the affordable unit application shall be applied to the Department of Housing and Community Development of the state prior to occupancy, any occupancy permit for this location, and certainly interested in the applicant's consideration as well. It's one that I omitted at the, on the staff report, but I would offer for your consideration.
Thank you, Jim, so just to restate that more simply, the affordable application should be in place prior to occupancy?
Correct, the affordable application that is submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development shall be submitted and approved back to the planning board that it has been submitted prior to occupancy. That really gets the ball rolling for that one affordable unit, so that it's not, you know, not that I, I don't think that this applicant would do it, but just that it's not left for the last second, so. That, that's all I would offer.
Sure, no, that's a great one, and I'm certainly in favor of that. We'll give Bob a minute. And you mentioned that entity is the housing, say that one more time?
So it's the Department of Housing and Community Development? They're the ones that will monitor our affordable count and manages the, what's called the subsidized housing inventory, so the overall list of affordable units that we have in, in our community.
And a copy of that would typically be tagged to the planning department?
Right, so typically we would get a copy of, of that before or as it's going to the state, but just a condition so that, you know, everyone's on notice, so.
I like it, great thought. Bob?
Mr. Chair, could I inquire of, of Jim? Jim, I'm adding on, on page three of the, of the staff report a special condition number nine, and I'm going to read what I think you told me, and you can tell me where I got it wrong, okay? So number nine, inclusionary housing condition, colon, affordable applications submitted to Housing and Community Development Department will be submitted, approved, and returned to the town of Barnstable before occupancy.
So I would simply suggest, rather than the word affordable, we could include LIP. So the abbreviation's LIP, so that's a local initiative program application. And perhaps if the board is comfortable with it, we could strike approved, so submitted. And that, the reason for that is, you know, locally, we can't dictate how quickly the state moves on these applications, so not to burden this applicant on, you know, the state's process. But just knowing that it is in the works and that they're moving prudently to get it executed.
So then I'd also strike the language and returned to the town of Barnstable as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good.
Could I also just say, just state that it's one, it's one unit, right?
Yeah.
Understood, yes, thank you. And just, any?
Say one dozen? That's more than is in the building.
Right, Ray. Any comments to that, are you comfortable with that?
That is perfect, you, you read my mind, Jim, thank you.
Great, great, and prior to the motion to that effect, we'll just need a motion to close the public hearing.
Sure.
Thank you, Bob, and a second? Thank you, Ray, and all those in favor, Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud votes aye. The public hearing is closed, and at this time, we would seek a motion on this item.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I, I move to approve with conditions, special permit, SP 2023-00378 North Street with the following findings and conditions. With regard to the draft findings, I'm referring to page two of the staff report dated April 5th. Draft findings I propose are, number one, the property location is 78 North Street Hyannis, Mass., Hyannis, as shown on Assessors Map 309, Parcel 192, in the downtown village zoning district and aquifer protection overlay district. Number two, the applicant and owner Bay Ridge Realty LLC seeks a special permit pursuant to section 240-1.5C2B, as in Bravo. The applicant proposes, the applicant proposes to enter into a parking agreement for offsite parking at the North Street lot where the previous commercial property historically parked their vehicles. Number three, the planning board finds that the issuance of the special permit is consistent with the design and infrastructure plan and that the development, development meets the following criteria. A, creates housing opportunities for persons and households of all income levels. B, the development provides for the minimizing of curb cuts and driveways on North Street through a shared use for parking purposes with a nearby property. Four, the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for the grant of a special permit. Section 240-1.5C2B allows the planning board to reduce onsite parking requirements by special permit. Five, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Six, a site plan has been reviewed and approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. The conditions of informal and site, strike that, informal and formal site plan review shall be incorporated by references as conditions of this special permit. Seven, lesser off-street parking is shown to be adequate given special circumstances, including, A, supplementary parking provided off premises through a parking license with a nearby property, and B, characteristics of use invalidating normal methods of calculating parking demand. Eight, the proposed repairs, alterations, and/or expansion are not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. And, Mr. Chair, I also recommend that we incorporate the draft conditions one through nine, nine being added just a moment ago, pen and ink, set forth on page three of the staff report dated April 5th, 2023.
Do you mind reading nine one more time?
Sure. Inclusionary, number nine, inclusionary housing condition. LIT application submitted to Housing and Community Development Department will be submitted to the, I'm sorry, will be submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development before occupancy.
Thank you, Bob, and Jim? LIP.
P is in. Peter. P is in Papa.
LIP. And a second on that motion?
And if I, if I might, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Just two, two minor comments.
Sure.
Conditions, if I might. Condition number five, as far as informal, informal site plan review. At the time, looking back at that letter, it did, one of the conditions with, we were going through a regulatory agreement process. So if we could modify condition number five to reflect that informal, informal site plan review conditions to the extent applicable under new zoning are hereby incorporated into this decision. And then on condition number one, the plans prepared by Matthew Eddy, they're dated August 18th, 2022, as revised on March 6th, 2023.
And that was, that was condition one?
That's correct.
As revised, what date, March?
Six.
Got it.
Right, 23.
That's only sheet C 2.0, and that revision, revision was just because of the new zoning, we had to update the zoning table.
So it's just these two?
Sure.
Yeah.
So the, my proposed draft conditions are modified as read into the record by Mr. Schultz.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Great. You had a second on this motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michael, all those in favor, Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud votes aye. Matter passes.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Next item this evening is general business related to a subdivision plan.
Thanks, Steve, this is a general business item. This is a definitive subdivision plan of land on Old Stage Road and Parker Lane modification discussion.
Excellent, thank you, Mary. And this time, we'd ask the applicant to come forward and provide an overview of the requested modification. Is, is your microphone on, Frank? There's a little button that says push to, right at the base of the microphone.
Okay. How's that?
Perfect, yeah, just restate your name if you don't mind.
Frank Gallagher, Gallagher Engineering in Foxborough. And I'm here with the applicant, Bill Egan. And what we, the reason we're here is to talk about one more waiver. This is a plan that the planning board approved a couple of months ago now, I think. Coming off of Parker Lane and creating two, two buildable lots. And it was, it was approved, some waivers were granted. And we actually would like to discuss with you one more waiver. And that is, yeah, that's the plan I wanted to show. It would be a waiver from section 801-35L, which is, discusses utilities and basically talks about underground electric. We would like to do overhead electric for this project. And it's kind of hard to tell, but we did show it on this plan in red. It would come up, I guess if you're traveling from Service Road down Parker Lane, it would pretty much be on the right-hand side of the road. There's an existing utility pole right at the intersection, really, of Parker and Service Road. And we would like to go from there and put three, three additional utility poles in that would take us all the way down to what's shown as Lot 2A, which is the furthest one down the road. And this is a waiver that we're asking for, and I think, I mean, we're, we're feeling as if, to try to maintain the rural character of this, this development. We think regular overhead electric and utility poles would, would do that. And I submitted a letter dated March 21st that made this request. And with that letter, we submitted a photograph. And the photograph is of Pilot's Way, which is sort of what we're a little bit modeled after here. We've looked at Pilot's Way, and that's, that's kind of the look that we had hoped for here. And so if, I don't know if the board has this, but I did attach this photograph with, with our waiver request, and you can see that they do have utility poles, and that's the, and I, I mean, I guess it's up to you to determine, but we think that that's more in line with a rural character, and that's what we're after here. And so that is what has brought us back before you with this waiver request.
Thank you very much, appreciate that presentation. And, you know, just to kind of summarize for the board, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, with a subdivision plan, when a change, when a modification comes before the board, the board needs to decide whether or not that qualifies as a minor or a major modification. A minor modification, if we deem it so and want that to be approved, it can be done so with a simple letter. Whereas a major modification does require us to kind of take a step back and open a public hearing to let the public make their. and open a public hearing to let the public make their comments known. So, in this instance, we're going to, you know, just go to the board and hear what each has to say. I also think it would be beneficial for us to offer our thoughts, if we do believe it's a major modification, offer our thoughts if it's something that we would be comfortable with, because if it's not, the applicant, I think, deserves to know that, so we don't, you know, certainly waste the applicant's time. All right? Mary, would you like to lead off?
What's the reasoning why you're changing it?
Just to try to enhance, I guess, the rural character.
So only as for aesthetics?
Primarily aesthetics. I mean, I'll be honest, it's a cost benefit for us as well. So, but, you know, I think, I think we do have a valid case to say that the waiver could be granted, and in doing so, you know, it would enhance the rural character of the development.
Okay. I don't have any questions other than the reasoning for doing this, but I also wondered if it's gone through the process already. It seems to me that people should be able to comment on that, just from my -- that's just my personal opinion.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely appreciate that. Ray, your thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, Mary, you definitely, I concur with your thinking about reopening the discussion to the public. Also, Pilot's Way was approved a while ago, right? That's been...
The 70s.
Yes. One of the things that we're trying to do now is to harden the infrastructure. And as you know, the storms are not going to get any milder, and they're not going to get any less frequent, and I think that's part of the overall game plan. And honestly, I'm not sure how overhead wires contribute to, you know, the rural nature other than, out in the boondocks, back when, they strung wires above ground. But I'm not sure that if, given that all things being equal, that would still happen if underground was available. I think that what you have is a nice place for the project. Maybe it does cost a few bucks more to do it, but I think, in my own personal opinion, it's just that it would look prettier without the wires, for whatever that's worth. So I would think, Mr. Chairman, we might want to, if we, we might want to revisit this in a more public forum.
Thank you, Ray. I tend to agree. You know, I would consider it a, personally, a major modification based on, you know, how things are written, and believe that if we did grant that additional waiver, we would want to hear from the public to see if there's any comments from the public. You know, my personal inclination is not to grant the waiver, you know, simply because I think that the, it's written the way it's written for a reason. You know, personally, I think it limits the disturbance to nature and the trees. I believe it's a better view, a better streetscape, and it could even be argued that underground better represents the rural character. And, you know, obviously, as Ray mentioned, hardening the infrastructure and, you know, there's a lot of maintenance that has to be done with above-ground versus below-ground. So, you know, that's my kind of inclination, is that it's a major modification. If we do want to pursue it, we would want to send it to a public hearing, but in general, I'm kind of generally opposed to it. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This came before us, I think, probably last fall or sometime in that timeframe, and I think we had a couple of different sessions on the plan. As I recall, there was some discussion about the width of the road, the thickness of the gravel that was going down there. I think there was something about a drain, location of a drain in the area. Don't hold me to all those details, but I do recall there was some discussion about the, about the nuts and bolts of the project and what was going to be there. And one of the things that was part of the project is that the utilities were going to be underground, which, first of all, was required without a waiver, and second of all, it's required because, as Ray, I think it was Ray, used the words "hardening the And I agree with what Mary said with regard to the ability of the public to be heard. So I do think it's a major change, because it's something that the board considered, I think, essentially a benefit to the town when it approved the project, that being no waiver of that requirement, so that the utilities would be underground. So I do think that it is a significant factor, and I do think the public should have an opportunity to be heard. I agree with, I think, all three, Mary, Ray, and Steve suggested that I don't see how putting telephone poles and overhead wires helps the rural character or the appearance of rural character. This clearly is rural, so it's not a question of just an appearance of rural. But it seems to me that putting in telephone poles and overhead wires is exactly the opposite of maintaining the rural character. What would be the most representative of rural character is no sign of infrastructure being constructed, such as power lines there. So I just think it doesn't, it impedes the rural, the appearance of rural character, not an improvement. The more important issue, however, is that because it's a rural area and it's heavily forested, the chance of a tree branch or a tree trunk coming down and taking out those wires is substantially greater than if the wires and the plumbing and everything else is buried. So I think there's a significant downside to the town to agreeing. So I think it is a major modification, and I think it does have to have a public hearing. And in the absence of some compelling reason that not currently present, I would be opposed.
Thank you, Bob. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually think I'm going to have a bit of a dissenting opinion on this, just given my experience professionally, dealing with Eversource for years, and knowing how that process can go and what it takes to put utilities underground versus overhead. And sometimes it is very difficult, sometimes it is not so difficult, and you're kind of at the behest of Eversource, who's a very difficult partner to work with, especially their engineering department. So, you know, I mean, I've tried to, on behalf of some of my clients and some of my projects, convert overhead wires going down public ways and private ways and put them underground, and sometimes it's one or two poles to eliminate, it's not that big of a deal. Sometimes, depending on how that infrastructure is set up, nothing to do with what you want to do, if there's a transformer on that pole that you're trying to take your service line and go underground, it makes it a much, much more difficult task. So you end up having to rework two, three, four different telephone poles up the roads, that nothing to do with your project, at a great expense, in a very long process. It takes one or two years probably to go through and get everything done. So, I am very pro-underground utilities. I wish the Cape almost had them everywhere. We have some underground utilities in newer-built neighborhoods and some downtown centers, but then some places not. That project that just came in front of us, the last one on North Street, they have overhead wires. So, thinking about this and how many, I think it's two building lots on this?
Correct.
Two building lots on a dirt gravel road, overhead wires, and it's coming off of the Service Road, which is all overhead, that's not that big of an impact for me. That being said, I think it could still warrant a public hearing, given the butters, you know, one thing that they think a dirt road's going to put in behind them, and it's another thing, that there's going to be some telephone poles or not, but the telephone poles don't bother me, but I think it would warrant a public hearing. That's all.
Great. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate those comments, that insight. Michael?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I also agree that this is a major modification, and I think that we should give the ability to the public to be heard. That's my point.
Yeah, well said. So it does seem the board, you know, has a kind of consensus regarding major modification with a public hearing, and Mary, would you like to make a motion of that effect?
Yeah, just give me a second here. Okay, so my motion for the general business item, definitive subdivision plan of land on Old Stage Road and Park Lane modification discussion is, the motion is to require a public hearing for the requested modification, as stated, that was last visited on March 21, 2023, by Gallagher Engineering.
Thank you, Mary. Any second?
I'll second.
I'll give it to Ray. Ray, second. And all those in favor, Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Thank you, Frank.
Okay. We appreciate your time and your input very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Discussion's closed? Is it closed?
It is. Yeah, yeah. Okay, moving along, we're going to move to...
Staff updates?
Going to discuss, yep, some staff updates. Jim, you want to chat about the downtown Hyannis Design Guidelines?
Absolutely. So, thank you for those who joined the joint meeting of the Planning Board and the Hyannis Historic Commission in discussing the downtown Hyannis Design Guidelines. So as you guys know, we're, the town is in receipt of a state grant to update our downtown Hyannis Design Guidelines to essentially make a cohesive unified document for all of our design standards. This planning board has to design an infrastructure improvement plan. The Historic Commission has their design regulations, and now we also have our downtown zoning amendment that just passed Town Council a few months ago, which has a number of design features in it. And so what this downtown Hyannis Design Guidelines project is, is to build upon that downtown zoning initiative to enhance and improve the zoning that's now in place, as well as those two other jurisdictional areas. So we do have a few members of Historic that are volunteering to join us in a working group. It would be great if there was one or two members here that were interested in also volunteering. I know at the joint meeting, we decided to wait till this meeting to formally decide. What that would entail is really looking through iterations of potential unification documents and providing some good guidance for staff and the other volunteers on what works at this board and what works at the commission and what doesn't work, so that we can, you know, we can use the documents that moves forward that will work well for all, as well as what works for the new zoning. You know, not a lot of time commitment, though we are doing a sit walk on April 28. That is a pretty hefty commitment, if interested, though you don't need to attend the whole time. What we're thinking of is 11 to 5, walking the different access of our downtown historic area at least, and getting good examples of, you know, what's quality design features that we want to maintain and what are things that we may want to push aside. So with that being said, you wouldn't have to stay for the whole time, it would be, you know, maybe morning or an evening, or, excuse me, late afternoon. But also, if you can't come for the sit walk, you know, just looking through iterations of potential design guidelines would be, you know, part of the job of the working group to then bring back to this board for your consideration.
I have a question.
Great. Well said. Yes, Mary, go ahead.
I have a question on that. Just for clarification, is it, you said it's the design guidelines for commercial, residential, everything?
Yeah, so, yes. So what we have in place right now is our downtown zoning that just put in place, and what that includes is everything, anything that's being permitted within the downtown area. There's, you know, site features like bringing it back up to the street, you know, fenestration requirements such as what North Street was referring to. But then, beyond that, we have our design and infrastructure plan, which incorporates much of that same territory that, essentially within our growth incentive zone, so all of Main Street, Barnstable Road, what have you. So that's the planning board's purview, but then we also have Hyannis Historic, which incorporates the waterfront, as well as Main Street. So they have kind of almost separate guidelines that they're operating under, and a lot of it does kind of, luckily, speak the same language, but we're hoping to kind of bridge that gap completely and enhance where we can, because there are some notable areas where maybe it's too broad, or sometimes they do conflict. So, yeah, so it's design guidelines for, you know, really our downtown core here of Hyannis.
And so, to help clarify, that is, these guidelines would be also used by the Historic Commission, Planning Board, anybody in the town, for this geographic area?
Right. So how it would practically work is, you know, if, let's say, there's a redevelopment of, you know, one of these larger buildings here on Main Street, they would apply it to site plan review, which would have strict requirements under our design and infrastructure plan for design characteristics. And then they would also, if they need a special permit, come to the planning board, where we can uphold our design standards. And then, lastly, would go to Historic, and they would have their set of design guidelines that should, at the end of the day, speak the same language, and also maybe more specific to what we truly desire today.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Yeah, and just one comment first, before Ray speaks, is Jim or Karen, maybe you could email this out to the board and kind of reference the area, so we can educate ourselves on current, you know, current language. I remember I referenced this with the Walgreens...
Right.
When I kind of pushed for those shingles and, you know, a little of those features, you know? So it's good that it's there, because we can use it for so many things, especially regulatory agreements. So, great thing to lean on. And I will just mention that I'm going to jump in on the 28th, but I'm not going to do the full six hours. I'm going to do like a, either a morning or afternoon, two-hour session. And keep in mind, too, that you don't even have to attend that if you can't. Jim's happy to do kind of a recap afterwards, which I'd be happy to join as well. So, nothing, we have to decide now, but if anybody wants to join, you know, Historic has three, and we certainly could do two or three as well. So, something to keep in mind. Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Jim, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I did, I was at the joint meeting, but essentially, Mary, the thrust of what, or the gist of what came out of that meeting and some of the explanation that Jim has very diplomatically laid out, is that essentially, we, the planning board now has enacted into statute a zoning ordinance that is very specific and gives, would be developers, some very clear guidelines about what kinds of development would be welcomed. My understanding is that the Historical Commission lacks that. It's kind of like, let me take a look at it, and I can kind of tell whether it's okay or not. And that is the, the task at hand, is to develop something, an equivalent of the zoning ordinance that the planning board put together, so that the Historical Commission has something akin to that. Hopefully, that is, as Jim was saying, that not at odds with the zoning statute currently on the books. And quite frankly, in these times, I think it behooves us to encourage our colleagues to do so, because to have just sort of general, what might be interpreted as vague guidelines, if somebody doesn't like, if their proposal is turned down and they don't like that, it leaves one, it leaves the town open for litigation. So I think that's the real task at hand. Please, correct me, Steve, if I misheard.
No, perfectly said, and it's going to be, you know, I think, we're the effort to have that cohesiveness between us and the Historic Board, and now that we have our new, modern, form-based code, to have new design standards to go with it, it's going to put us in great position. So, something I think is very exciting. Bob, or Tim, Michael, any comments?
I'm all set. Thank you.
And that was the 28th. You said it was... You said it was, what was the time on 28th again?
Yep, we can, we can send it around, but it's from, I believe, 11 to 5.
Okay, great.
It's baby buggy accessible.
Yeah. It is a walking tour, right? It can bring the stroller?
That's it, exactly. All are welcome, all are welcome. So, so, yeah, we'll give it some thought. Jim or Karen will send those current standards out, so we can get our eyes on those, get familiar with them, which will definitely help us for future meetings. And if anyone wants to join, you know, please let Jim or Karen know. Jim, would you like to, before I move on, any more comments on that? Seeing none, we will continue on. Jim, LCP update?
Absolutely. So the LCPC is moving along with the grand vision for the local comprehensive plan. We, the committee met just a few weeks ago, had a working session to begin to develop a framework for that vision, and they will meet again on May 11th in an attempt to bring it all together and form that, that true vision that would continue on to the Phase 2, which would come after to develop the full plan in and of itself. In addition of the vision, we have the existing conditions report that's now online for the public viewing and comment. That, that report is posted on the barnstablelcp.com, and is available for comment through April 24th. So we're taking any comments and suggestions until April 24th, which then we'll bring all those comments back to the LCPC for their consideration. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. We have three, Chapter 1, we have some correspondence through Chapter 1, sorry, Chapter 91 notices, 592 Pompanessett Road, Getuut, Layton, Boardwalk Pier, Ramp and Float, 340 Hollage Hill Road, Barnstable, Matthias, Seasonal Walk-in Pier, 592 Pompanessett Road, Barnstable, Layton, Boardwalk Pier, Kayak Rack, Marine Storage, Ramp and Float. For matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I just wanted to, I wanted to ask Karen if you could reach out to each board member. I wanted us to just make sure that Karen has a, kind of a quick reaction contact for each of the board members. I realize sometimes email may not be the best for people to see and respond quickly. You know, I know that I communicate with staff via email, phone, text constantly, so if anyone would prefer a phone call or a text, our overall goal, myself, Karen, and Jim, is just to have kind of quicker reactions regarding attendance for meetings. You know, for me, the best thing is when the agenda comes out on Thursday, let's all try to respond to that email, letting Karen know if we're going to attend or not. Just doing that, obviously, you know, for staff's purposes, applicants' purposes, just so we know what we have coming up. All right? On to approval of minutes, and we're going to look for approval of the March 13th, 2023 draft minutes. Bob, did you want to make comments on, on this?
Sure, Mr. Chair. I have to say, belatedly reviewed the minutes this afternoon, and I did see just a couple of minor adjustments that I think probably should be made. It's on page six of the draft minutes. At the top of the page, between the, the two roll call votes on the dockside project, there's, there's two typed lines between the roll call votes, and the last word on the second line is feet, and I think it should say stories. So the line would read, highest and best use would be 2.5 stories, or 2.5 floors, as opposed to 2.5 feet. And then the other was, as you recall, we had two votes on the project. One was, the first vote was to approve or disapprove the plan. And then the second one, after the, the board voted to disapprove the proposal, there was a motion to not send the matter forward to the Town Council. On the second vote, I actually voted aye rather than nay, voting to not send it forward to the Town Council. Neither of these are terribly important, and frankly, I don't really care about how accurate they are, but I probably should just put in the record.
No, I, I'm glad you did. I very much appreciate your attention to detail on those. Anybody opposed to either of those amendments?
No, as, Mr. Chairman, I actually circled that in dismay, because I saw that Bob had...
There you go. Okay. All right. A good eye to both of you. So I move that the minutes of March 13th, 2023, the draft minutes, are approved with the two modifications Bob just mentioned. And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And all those in favor, Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Future meetings, April 24th, 2023, 7:00 p.m., and May 8th, 2023, 7:00 p.m. Before we close, I just wanted to give a shout out to Steve Costello, who has retired from this board. Steve was a loyal public servant to the Town of Barnstable for many, many years, and I won't go on and on, but I will tell you about my first time when I joined the board. I really knew almost nothing about what this board does, or what Town Council does. I knew almost nothing. So my first assignment was to watch the videos, and I watched Mary lead the board and was struck by her poise, her patience, her kindness, and her professionalism in handling some wild, wild meetings. There was some very intense meetings. So I was excited to, you know, fall in line behind Mary. However, I only had Mary as my chair for one meeting, and then Steve, Steve took over, and, you know, Steve ended up really being my mentor, you know, just watching him and watching him command a meeting and give everybody the chance to speak. He was just very cordial, professional, you know, and it was a privilege working with him, and I think we all benefited from his time. And I also just wanted to state that I thought that he took a lot of unnecessary and unwarranted flack, you know, a few times, and I don't believe any of that was deserved. So I just wanted to thank Steve for his service to the Town of Barnstable. And if anybody would like to make any comments, please do so.
I, I would, I would just say the same thing. I think he was, he spent a lot of time and effort supporting the town on the planning board, so he was, he's my neighbor, but he was also an excellent participant in the planning board. So we will miss him, but I appreciate all of, all the work that he's done.
Well said, Mary. Thank you. And with that, any final comments by staff or board members before we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
All right. Give it to Bob and Ray with the second. All those in favor, Mary?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael and myself.
Aye.
Nope, sorry, Michael.